Perfect, we have Commissioner Krishna online and we're going to take this one from the top and start over and call the meeting to session from scratch again. Are you guys still ready down there? Staff is ready, we're ready, all the commissioners are on the line. It's an exciting day here, folks. All right. Meeting is called to order. Can we have the roll, please?
Andre Spinelli.
To affirm that you are here at the meeting, you can either type in the chat or you can speak out loud. Andre Spinelli, are you here? Andre's here.
Danielle Bailey.
I'm here.
Greg Strike.
Greg Strike.
Brian Looney.
I'm here.
Aaron O'Quinn.
Here.
Radhika Krishna. Jim Winchester.
Here.
Jared Gardner is excused, thank you. And for the record, Commissioner Krishna did type in, she was here. Moving on to the minutes, please type into the chat if you would like to make a motion to approve the minutes. Moved by Commissioner Krishna, seconded by Commissioner Anderson, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, the minutes are approved. Moving on to the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Oh, sorry, before we, I went too far ahead. Are there any disclosures? Commissioner Strike, do you have any disclosures? No disclosures by Commissioner Strike. Commissioner Spinelli, do you have any disclosures? No disclosures by Commissioner Looney. Commissioner Spinelli, do you have any disclosures? Commissioner Spinelli, please type in or state whether or not you have any disclosures. Nothing by Commissioner Spinelli. Commissioner Anderson, do you have any disclosures?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Looney has previously stated yes. disclosures. Commissioner O'Quinn, do you have any disclosures?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Krishna, do you have any disclosures?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Winchester, do you have any disclosures? No disclosures from Commissioner Winchester, and I also have no disclosures. Moving on to the consent agenda, I see that there was previously a motion by Commissioner Strike to accept the consent agenda, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Winchester, is any objections? Seeing no objections, those are approved. And going back, I skipped the informational item, but I wanted to keep the ball rolling. We have a informational item from staff.
Thank you. Thank you. So, this is just an update from the department regarding the step one of our downtown project, which the commission reviewed extensively previously and made a recommendation to the Assembly. The Assembly did adopt that on April 28th, 2020, in substantially the same format as was recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I'm going to interrupt real quick, it seems as though no one from the audience can really hear staff in the report. Is anyone having trouble hearing me when I'm talking? Please type in now if you're having trouble hearing me when you're talking. All right, I'm just going to ask staff to yell with all your mic.
Okay, I'm going to speak as loudly as possible here. So, this is just an update from the department regarding step one of the Our Downtown Project, which involved, as the commission is aware, the transfer of the B2A, B2B, and B2C zoning districts from old Title 21 into current Title 21. And just wanted to update the commission that the Assembly did adopt the step one project in substantially the same format as the commission recommended. And that was done on April 28th through Assembly Ordinance 2020-38. And the new updated code language-
Sorry, I'm going to have to interrupt again. We have people online that still can't hear, and I think it might be because my mic is on, so I'm going to try to turn my mic off and then still have you yell. Thank you everyone for being so patient. All right, I'm going to try to turn this off and I'll give you the go-ahead.
Okay, I'm going to do a brief test here to see if everybody can hear. Good to go? Okay, great. So, this is just an update to the Planning and Zoning Commission from the department regarding step one of our downtown project, which involved transferring the B2A, B2B, and B2C zoning districts from old Title 21 to current Title 21. And the commission is very familiar with this amendment based on their recommendation to the Assembly. And the Assembly did adopt that amendment in substantially the same format that the commission recommended. The Assembly adopted this on April 28th through Assembly Ordinance 2020-38. And the amended code language and the new chapter 21 dot 11 downtown went to effect on May 28th, 2020. Since the commission's version, there have been some very slight technical edits, mainly typos and other language changes regarding, in that vein, but otherwise, the ordinance has not been changed substantially from the commission's recommendations previously. So, the department just wanted to update the commission, let you know that it has been adopted and is in effect. And it will actually be posted on the department's website officially on the Title 21 links this week, sometime this week. So, I'm here for any questions and we just wanted to update you. Thank you.
Two minutes ago, I just got notification that it went back to silence. Can I get clarification from those on the bridge? Are you having trouble hearing because it's too quiet, or are you getting complete silence? Apparently, it's just too quiet. So, when we're, staff is talking, I think we really just need to be as loud as possible. I know it's going to feel awkward yelling, but we're going to be yelling this meeting. So, for everyone who's actually in here in person, I apologize, but I'm going to be trying to yell through. Also, Commissioner Strike has said that you can listen through on the TV and that may be an option as well. I'm going to have a quick conversation with staff to see if we can troubleshoot some stuff before moving on.
Oh, that sounds a lot better. Testing, testing.
Nice and loud.
Testing, testing.
All right, I think we may have figured out the microphone situation. Again, thank you all for voicing up and letting us know when there's an issue. Given the fact that all of the commissioners have read item C2 in our packet, if you have any specific questions about C2 for staff, please type into the chat. Seeing no questions for staff in the queue, thank you staff for presenting and thanks for presenting it multiple times so we could hear it. Moving on to our next item of business, item F5. Is there a motion to postpone item F5 to August 3rd? Motion by Commissioner Krishna, is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Anderson, is there any objection? And apparently, we just got another report that we can't hear anything, both by Commissioner Spinelli and Commissioner Strike. Staff or IT support, anything we should be doing or could be doing? I think it's me as well. They can hear nothing on the phone bridge, but the TV works fine. However, Commissioner Winchester can hear through the bridge and Commissioner Looney can hear, or Commissioner O'Quinn can hear through the bridge. All right, it sounds like we are back online. I'm just going to move forward as if we can hear until you hear otherwise, and if you ever cut out, let us know and we'll pause and get back till we can hear again. Sorry that this is how it has to run, but I think we'll keep moving forward if we can make some progress, even if it's slow progress. Is there any objection to postponing item F5 until August 3rd? Seeing no objection, that is approved. Item F5 is postponed until August 3rd. Moving on to public hearings, before we get into the public hearing, I'm going to read the procedure by which the public hearing process goes. The procedure by which the public may speak to the commission at its meetings is as follows. After the staff presentation is completed on public hearing items, the chair will ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the commission rules of procedure. Petitioners, including all of his or her representatives, will receive 10 minutes. Part of this time may be reserved by rebuttal. Representatives of groups such as community councils and PTAs and et cetera will receive five minutes. Individuals will receive three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes, except for commission recommendations to the Assembly, which are not appealable. Appeals must be filed with the clerk's office within 20 days after approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission of the resolution, which is the commission's final decision. A fee for the appeal is required at the time of filing. Staff, can we hear the report?
Thank you, Chair. This is Francis McLaughlin presenting for the Planning Department in the matter of case 2020-0078. This is a request for a conditional use permit for a camper park in the B3 district, the The petitioner is seeking to have a 24-space RV campground with a common shower house and bathrooms. The existing residential structures on the site will become the campground office and camp host. Forty-two public hearing notices were mailed on June 5th, 2020. No response was received from the Birchwood Community Council. Four late public comments were received, expressing concern about this being a manufactured home community, also known as a trailer park, but that is not the case. This application is for an RV campground and guests at this campground are limited to a maximum of 30 days to stay at the site. With regard to the approval criteria, standard one is met. Camper parks meet the intent of the use classification as commercial visitor accommodations. Approval criteria two, the standard is met, there are no applicable district-specific standards, and the site complies with the table of dimensional standards. Approval criteria three is met, I'll go into a description of that later in my remarks. Approval criteria four, the property has almost five acres and the slope of the lot is flat. No special requirements are needed to mitigate impacts on neighboring commercial and industrial businesses. Approval criteria five is met. The camper park will not alter the character of the surrounding area in a manner which substantially limits the use of surrounding properties. Approval criteria six is met. Visual enhancement, L1 landscaping is provided along the west lot line in accordance with the minimum perimeter landscaping requirements. Also, noise and light generated by this site are not greater than adjoining residential, commercial, and industrial uses. Approval criteria seven is met. The camper park will not block view sheds or create a nuisance. Approval criteria eight is met. The single driveway is, will enter the site from the Old Glen Highway, which is a major arterial in official streets and highways plan, DOT. A DOT-issued driveway permit will be required. DOT requests the site plan add a pedestrian pathway on the south side of the driveway connecting the office to the Old Glen Highway. The pathway aligns with the pedestrian path on the other side of the Old Glen. This is a recommended condition of approval by the Planning Department. Approval criteria nine is met. The site is within the area served by the Chugiak Volunteer Fire Station. The property will have a community well and onsite septic system, which are both regulated by the State Department of Environmental Conservation. So, as I said before, one of the use-specific standards for a camper park is that the length of stay is no greater than 30 days. The department's recommending approval of this application, subject to conditions one through five on page six of your packets. Conditions one and two are standard. Condition three is resolved with watershed management services, the need for stream mapping. Condition four is the one I discussed earlier about a driveway permit required. And then five is the pedestrian pathway next to the driveway. I'd be happy to answer any questions, thank you.
Any questions for staff? Commissioner Strike, do you have a question for staff?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. In reading some of the public comments, there was a comment that was presented to us here at Lightwood by John Daly, and the concern being the limitation on the 30 days. How strictly and how is that 30-day maximum term enforced? And/or is that enforced by the parking space only or in the park for 30 days?
The requirement to not stay longer than 30 days is enforced by the operator. Also, we have a complaint-driven zoning land use enforcement office. Thank you.
Commissioner Strike, did you have any follow-up questions?
No, no, thank you.
Commissioner Looney.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so essentially, my question is, parallel to what Commissioner Strike was asking about the time limits, I don't know whether the time limit is based on the actual person who was staying at this RV park or the actual RV there. I was sure, that's one of the comments that was submitted in writing, was the neighborhood is worried about these people who are going to be staying with a motorhome that might be there for months and months, even though the actual person may move out or leave for a little bit every 30 days or something, but they like reassurance, know that the motorhomes themselves are not going to be staying there year-round. Is that clear, I guess, in the current code and the definition of RV park or what constitutes
Thank you for the question, Mr. Looney. The question was, the camp host, can they live in a trailer year-round?
Actually, I was thinking more guests, not the camp host, but can the guests and can their vehicles stay there for many months at a time?
No, they cannot.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, just for clarification on my side, I did not understand the question. Francis, did you catch the question and can you interpret it to me?
Mr. Looney said, are we sure that the vehicles will have to be removed after 30 days? Is the code clear about that? And I said, yes, it is.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Quinn, did you have a question?
Yes, I was wondering, it says, I know it says something about not intended for storage in the definition. Would vehicle storage be a use that would require the applicant to come back to the commission for another conditional use, or is that entitled use in this zone?
That is a separate use. It is not being allowed by this application.
But would they need to come to us for a conditional use permit, or would they be permitted by right to do that?
Vehicle storage is not allowed.
Okay, thank you.
And then, there is a question from Commissioner Strike. Would you like me to read your question, or would you like to state it yourself?
I was just concerned that I would not be heard here, but what provision of the code stipulates that campers can't be there for more than 30 days? And the reason I ask that is on page five, number B, paragraph two. The occupants of such space shall remain in that space a period not to exceed 30 days. Occupants at first read would imply persons, not vehicles, campers, tents. This goes back to Mr. Looney's original question.
So, through the chair, Mr. Strike, the vehicles and the occupants will not be allowed to stay there more than 30 days. I'm looking at the code use-specific standard on, in chapter five, page 80 of our code books, and it is clear that this is an RV park and not some sort of other living arrangement.
And while I can appreciate that, it seems, there seems to be a contradiction, at least in the information presented to us in this paragraph. Occupants refers to persons, not inanimate objects. Therefore, they address the occupants not being there for more than 30 days, but there's nothing to address that a camper can't stay there for six months.
Through the chair, Mr. Strike, if this is a concern to you or other members of the commission, one solution might be to add a condition of approval that prohibits campers and their vehicles from staying durations longer than 30 days. I think that that would get at the heart of your question. While I don't think it's necessary, that might address the concern that you've spoken to.
In some parts of the state, in some parts of the country, they're using these camper parks as the equivalent of VRBOs.
Thank you, Mr. Strike. If the issue that you verbalized is a concern, then I recommend a condition of approval stating that visitors and their vehicles shall not stay longer than 30 days.
Perhaps we can have the petitioner address this during their presentation.
I agree, that's a good idea.
Thank you.
Any other questions from staff, or for staff? Seeing no other questions in the queue, can we hear from the petitioner?
We've got your voice on phone, can you hear us here?
I can hear you.
Okay, I'm Craigie Hanson with Hanson Land Solutions. I've got with me Simon Gilland, he's the engineer whose name shows up on some of the documents that you guys have been looking at. We don't really have much of a presentation to give to you, other than that we're here and everything has been worked through the process already. What we've presented is, already is our presentation. If there's any questions, we'd be glad to answer those questions.
All right. Nine minutes and 42 seconds remaining for rebuttal. Any questions for the petitioner?
Can I, I'm going to try to put the dogs out. Come on, come on, come on.
Any questions for the petitioner? Commissioner Strike.
Yes, thank you, and through the chair. To the petitioner, the question that rose earlier about the length of stay for the occupant versus the length of parking for a camper or tent or other type of facility usage, can you address that question if you heard it earlier?
Yes, we did hear it. With regards to addressing it, we can, we're merely representatives of the owner. The intent has been clear all along that it's going to be a short-term RV park. It's our understanding that days is a limitation. We never seen occupants versus vehicles, so all along, we've anticipated that the occupants and the vehicles would both only be able to stay there for 30 days, and that's the extent of the thought that's been put into it.
Part of the concern that we've heard and read about through some public comments is how some of the parks around in the municipality, you end up having car storage, car repairs, lean-tos, storage containers, fish processing pieces, and all of a sudden, you get the blue tarp and the abundance of home furnishings and so forth, stored and stacked and so forth in many of these spaces. How do you plan to address or prevent that from occurring?
Well, of those issues we spoke of, what does code speak to specifically? Really, we anticipated that the code was stringent enough that those things wouldn't allow it anyway. We can say that we'll work that into our business plan, I'm not sure where you want us to go with that. Does that, is that stuff not allowed, disallowed by code, as we assumed it was at the outset?
I believe the crux of this is the assurances that there won't be occupants and/or campers for the greater than 30 days. So, if that's the intent, then I can go with that.
It truly is the intent. I know that, when we went to the community council meeting there in Chugiak, as we spoke with the different people, that's really what came out, that was the main concern. And we were sensitive to that and realized that. I guess that's, all that I can say is that it certainly is the intent, that it will just be, you know, actually, it's not even anticipated to the 30 days, but it'll just be short-term. be, you know, actually, it's not even anticipated as the 30 days, but it'll just be short-term RV stays. And that's, they want to keep it a nice RV park. If it's got polytarp, as you spoke of, I suspect that the attendance there will be diminished and they won't make as much money. So, I guess that's what I would say is the motive for them to keep it looking nice around there.
So, you have no issue with an additional condition of approval, a stipulation that would not allow the travel trailers or recreational vehicles or so forth to occupy a space or in the park for greater than 30 days at a time?
I think that would be all right, because I think that's what we anticipated at the outset.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Seeing no other questions from the petitioner at this time, can we get our first public commenter on the phone?
Hello, is this Stephen?
Yeah, it is.
This is the place.
Let me turn the speaker off. Okay.
This is the planning and zoning. Yep, thank you. So, this is planning and zoning calling for your public testimony on case 2020-0078. Are you calling as a representative of a group or an individual?
I'm an individual.
Okay. You'll have three minutes to provide your testimony. If you could state your first and last name for the record, you can begin.
Sure, it's Stephen Ellis, Stephen with a V, E-L-L-I-S. And my main concerns are, I support the park, is again, it's the long-term stay. My neighbor's probably going to shoot me. I honestly don't have problems with people staying longer than 30 days, but what I don't want to see is vehicles and people taking up permanent residency in the RV park, you know. So, that was one of my concerns is, and I've done code enforcement, you know, and I've always seen what was, people say what was intended versus what ends up down in writing, is whatever the commission decides is the length of stay allowed, that the RV and occupants need to leave the park for a reasonable amount of time before they come back, you know, and/or this is the max amount of time they can stay in the park for calendar year, something like that. But it's got to be something quantifiable, because otherwise, it becomes very hard to enforce, because when you say they can only be here for 30 days, 30 days, they drive off the property, come right back in, and the 30-day clock starts ticking again. So, where does that, how does that work out in the long run? So, again, year-round occupation or living there year-round, you know, is problematic for me and I believe the rest of our community. So, you can see in my comments I submitted, you know, the codes are there, RVs are definitely not intended for, you know, for long-term human habitation. Building code, which is still the law out here, even though building safety service is not provided, still the law, and just says they're not to be occupied as permanent dwellings. So, that would be contrary, you know, if that was happening, that wouldn't be allowed under code. That's it. You have any questions for me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't currently see anyone, the commissioner's asking questions in the queue for you, so I want to thank you for your public testimony. As a follow-up for staff, now that we've heard all of our public comments, could you please let us kind of answer that question for us? Is there a provision as far as how many days that someone has to be gone for after a 30-day stay, or could they technically drive their vehicle out the park and then drive it right back in?
Right. Thank you for the question, Mr. Ellis and Chair Bailey. The condition of approval that Mr. Strike and I were discussing, it seems like if the motion included a phrase that said, you know, a stay shall not exceed 30 days, and no more than 90 days in a calendar year, then that would get it, that second part about the maximum number of days in a year might address the question raised by Mr. Ellis about somebody trying to misuse the camper park for multiple stays of 30 consecutive days. I just wanted to leave open that a person could drive up from the Lower 48, stay at the camper park, you know, drive to Fairbanks, and then come back to it, and it would not be a misuse of the camper park for a tourist's say.
Thank you. Moving back, since we have heard all of our public testimony, moving back to the petitioner. You have nine minutes and 42 seconds remaining for rebuttal, you can use that time as you wish, starting now.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis, we're gonna hang up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess we don't really have too much to say regarding that subject. We felt that and understood that the code was clear regarding the 30 days. 90 days total for the year doesn't sound unreasonable. Like he just mentioned, there does seem to be the issue where you've got to drive up from the Lower 48, they want to stay there, and by golly, they've been there for a full month, they think they're going to go to Valdez and Fairbanks for the next month, but then they'd like to come back in the following month. Seems like that should be a reasonable thing that they could do. But I guess that's all that I've got to say regarding that.
Any other questions for the petitioner from the commission, or for staff from the petition, from the commission? Just to kind of bide some time, in case we have other people that want to be late to the queue, I guess I would ask a question for the petitioner. We heard a proposed modification, or a proposed condition of approval from staff. First, I wanted to see if you had any objections to that condition. Do you have any objections to the condition that was proposed by staff?
That condition that we're speaking of was a 30-day limitation being abided by, is that the condition we're speaking of?
It was that not only would the occupants, but the vehicles or their shelters would have to be removed within 30 days as well. Would there be an objection to that?
No.
And then, the next question was, there was kind of proposed recommendations to ensure that someone doesn't just leave and come back. Would you be okay to modifications to that time limit, such as, one thing that was proposed was no more than 90 days in a calendar year, would that be something that the petitioner would object to?
Well, I guess, I guess at this point, I'd have to say that I don't think I should agree to that. It's not, you're adding something that's beyond what code states, and I am concerned about, you know, summer's a long time. Now, we're back and forth on this issue of, well, is 90 days enough? And I'm not certain where that would go, and I guess that's where I would come at, is it seems like we are just adding something to code.
All right. Any other questions from the commission? Seeing no other questions from the commission in the queue, thank you for your time. The public hearing is now closed, and what is the will of the body? Commissioner Strike?
Yes, thank you. And in the matter of case number 2020-0078, a condition of use for a camper park in the B3 SL General Business District, I would move for approval, and upon approval, upon this motion, then would actually then make an addendum to the recommendation. I'll wait.
And just to clarify, you're, what you will be doing an addendum to, but your motion is including the five department recommendations, conditions of approval?
That is correct.
Okay. So, there is a motion on the floor for approval, subject to the five conditions on page six of our packet, is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Looney. And Commissioner Strike, would you like to, I believe you said you were going to propose an additional condition, would you like to make a motion to amend?
Yes. I would like to add a additional recommendation, number six, that such approval is subject to the limitations of both occupants and of vehicles, tents, trailers, et cetera, that such time be limited to a period not to exceed 30 days, and no more than 90 days in a calendar year.
Sorry, this is for mine, it was no more than 90 days, is that what you said?
No more than 90 days in a calendar year.
All right. I believe we captured that motion our end here. Is there any second for the motion to amend, seconded by Commissioner Looney? Would you like to speak to your motion, Commissioner Strike?
I would. This is not a code issue, this is a conditional use issue, and since we're, it's before this commission to identify a conditional use for the occupancy and for the use of this property, I feel that this additional approval requirement helps protect the community, and I contemplated taking it one step further and requiring a minimum, say, two-week break in between the occupancies, but it's implied that the occupants and the trailers or the tents or whatever have to be removed on an every 30-day basis. So, I think the landowners will do what they can and have the intent to occupy and manage this properly, so, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Strike. Seeing no one in the queue yet, I am gonna jump in and perhaps pose a question for Commissioner Strike, since you brought up this issue. Do you have any concerns with the fact that since we essentially have a 90-day-long summer in Alaska, that this could in effect allow an RV or a vehicle to come in for 30 days, leave for a day, come in for 30 more days, leave for a day, come in for 30 more, and you essentially have a summer complete occupancy? Would you have any, do you have any concerns for that, or is, I'm just speaking to myself, I know I do, I don't quite, haven't worked out a way to word an amendment yet, but that's one thing I have a concern with, with, I think I'm on the same page with everything you're proposing, but I'm just not sure if, from my insistence, if it goes too far, if it goes far enough.
Well, I, and I appreciate the comment, and it was a concern that I also had and have. In addressing that concern direct, the, if nothing was done pursuant to the code, they can do exactly that in other trailer parks, in other, I don't want to use camper parks. They can leave for a day and come back. The requisite requirement is on the management of those camper parks to manage appropriately, and they're going to give discounts for longer-term stays and so forth. We're not going to see this in how it's implemented, other than probably through the complaint process. But whether someone leaves for a day or a week, only to come back to their same site that they didn't clean up and it wasn't available to rent or lease out to another new tenant coming in because it was still being reserved, I think that is, still remains a genuine And I think that'll probably have to end up being handled through the city through a complaint process, if those spaces aren't cleared out. But I don't know how we might address that in the additional conditional use recommendation. I'm open to other suggestions.
Thank you, Commissioner Strike. I'm gonna continue to think on it my end. Any other questions, comments from the commission or proposals who would like to speak to this, towards this motion to amend that we currently have on the table? Jumping back in, with a proposal of my own, I'm not sure how I feel about this, I would appreciate other people's comments. I might propose saying something along the lines, not more than 90 days in a year, or 30 days in a 45-day period. I'm not sure if that would add, I feel like it would add an extra barrier, so that it would ensure that at least someone couldn't go, stay for 30 days, leave for a day, come back and stay for 30 more. Again, staff, I don't know if you have any concerns with that language?
No, I don't, Madam Chair.
Kind, I'm getting a couple comments in through chat, and just because I want to make sure we have it on the record, a chat from Commissioner Strike saying he likes that, a chat from Commissioner Looney says, "I like that too, and it's simple." Given that consideration, Commissioner Strike, would you take that as a friendly amendment? We don't do friendly amendments to that, so would you be willing to withdraw your motion to amend and replace it with the one I did? Again, you can say no.
I would agree.
Just to double-check things on our side, Lori, do you need that to be repeated? Nope, she does not. So, we have a new motion to amend on the table, is there a second?
Second.
Can whoever seconded state their name if they seconded?
Strike.
Is that Brian, Commissioner Looney? Seconded, Commissioner Strike, you cannot second your own motion, but I appreciate your go-tuitiveness. Someone else wants to type, uh, seconded by Commissioner Looney? Man, we're rolling, guys. Would anyone else like to speak to the motion as amended? Question by Commissioner, by Mr. McLaughlin.
Lori or Ms. Bailey, could you repeat the friendly amendment? I just want to make sure that the language is, doesn't have an unforeseen consequence. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for double-checking for us. It is to add condition six for occupants, vehicles, trailers, et cetera, and limited the period of not to exceed 90 days in a calendar year and no more than 30 days in All right, it looks like we have, I think I'm appointing you commissioner, as many times I'm trying to call you Commissioner McLaughlin, Mr. McLaughlin. It looks like we have an approval there. And yes, Commissioner Looney typed in it would apply both to the occupants and the trailer. I believe we've clarified the motion to amend, are there any other questions, or should we move to a vote? Type now if you have any questions. All right, we are going to move to a vote. I am getting the roll as we speak, all right. Commissioner Strike?
Yes.
Commissioner Spinelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson? Commissioner Anderson, you can either type in your vote, or you can, yes, from Commissioner Anderson. Commissioner Looney?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Krishna?
Yes.
Commissioner Winchester?
Yes.
And I would also vote yes. That motion passes. Moving on to the underlying motion, would anyone else like to speak to the motion, knowing that we have to have findings for the record? Seeing no one else in the queue yet, I'll get the ball rolling. I would say that it meets the approval criteria of AMC 21-030- I would say that it meets the approval criteria of AMC 21-03080, specifically going to the public use comments. I believe that most of the people who had concerns about this item seemed to mostly be concerned with the idea that it would transition from an RV park into more of a mobile home park. And I believe with the motion as amended by Commissioner Strike, we really do abridge off a lot of those concerns. I think also, it struck a very reasonable balance. And as noted by Commissioner Strike earlier, though I'm not sure if it made it onto the record yet, that because this is a conditional use, it's well within the commission's right to add on additional uses to make sure that it fits the needs of the community. Anyone else like to state any findings for the record? Or have any questions or comments on the underlying motion? Seeing no one else in the queue, I'm gonna call for a vote. Commissioner Strike?
Yes.
Commissioner Spinelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Looney?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Krishna?
Yes.
Commissioner Winchester?
Yes.
I also vote yes. And that motion passes. And that resolves item G1 on our agenda. Seeing no other items on the agenda, I just want to remind people that there is no planning zoning meeting on July 13th. There is a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Strike. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Winchester. Before I dismiss everyone, I just want to say, thank you all. I know this meeting was not our easiest, and a lot of it's technological, and I just want to say, you all did great with voicing up and letting me know if you couldn't hear. And, yeah, thank you all, and we are adjourned.